And I didn't think you could move salaries to those kind of line. In the health department?
Yes.
Is that a yes you can? Or do you have a how?
So, you know, you have to take off some of the personal stuff of those receipts. And the sales tax. Yeah. You can tell. I borrow pen.
Todd, you got a college grad, a high school graduate coming out this week.
Yep.
Where's he headed in college to?
Taylor University.
Taylor, oh. First in college.
Yep. Environmental science.
Did you?
So far.
Him and Gracie are in a math class together?
Public school.
Has she been reported to be how bad she acts in class?
No, how bad he acts.
Well, she did before.
You're.
If you can come back at me and say.
Grace is bad at Jewel.
Well, she. She doesn't get much trouble.
There you go.
I don't know what's in her heart, but at least. You got Gracie. How would she?
Cause I figure I'll do that after.
Yeah, then I need a copy of that.
Yeah, she's, she's a straight.
Genetics.
Genetics. I can't do that. That don't make it, did it? Yeah.
I can't understand what about, but I'll just come and get you afterwards. And I meant it, I meant it. No, I meant it when I said it.
He didn't do anything I did.
I spent fifteen minutes looking for my telephone this morning. And I couldn't find it. Thank goodness, somebody called me. Huh?
I said, I did remember the seats, receipts of these.
Mm-hmm.
All right, welcome to the May meeting of Carroll County Council. Please stand and join me in the official regents.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call to the podium, Mr. and, or, on, lab, for the press.
Thanks. Thanks for the invitation and appreciate your hard work, your careful, and also to a reminder, as Paul said, that we have students graduating from Carroll, from Delphi, from Rossville in our community, as well as in Wentworth Lakes, and probably other schools too that have, that put other names. We're here to serve those students who are part of our community and their parents who are part of our community, and we make big decisions that impact the community. Thank you for your hard work and your diligence. So let's pray. God, be good. I want to pray and thank you for each piece that you give to us of life, the breadth of life, the joy of life. God, I also want to thank you for this community that we live in. This Carroll County community is diverse in its geography, it's diverse in just even the industry that we have here, diverse in people that are present. God, I pray that we would be able to, as these folks make decisions about how we work in our community, help us do that together, help us to do that with a common bond, making sure we make the best decision that all people can benefit from. And Lord, we just know that they have heavy decisions to make as they continue to work on how we provide all things that are needed for our community to function well. And there are so many different pieces, so many moving pieces, so many things they say, how can we make this work in this way and visit this lap? All those sort of things are difficult pieces for us to do. So God, as these folks give up their time, they come here wanting to make the best decision, but they also have lots of things going on in their own lives. If they're like me, oftentimes I get up on Sunday morning to pray, to preach and pray, and it's like, oh, I've got so much stuff going on, this is rough. And so God, for each person who's here making decisions, bless their family lives, bless their work life, bless anything that was on their mind as they came here, allow it to be set aside as they get this meeting, allow the way in which they interact to be a way that honors you, glorifies you, and serves our community. In your prayer and belief, amen. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. You have in front of you the consent agenda. Are there any items from the consent agenda?
It's another set of this stuff.
Oh, it's all right, I got it ready.
Oh, you mean a whole set? Oh, it's there, yeah.
It should be one for. I don't think she gave one out. That's Doc's copy.
Okay.
Does Eric take one?
I think, I think Eric's mine.
Oh, okay.
No, that's okay. So are there any items whatsoever?
I was wondering, I know it's certainly a poll, but I was just hoping that everybody would know.
But I think that that was certainly one of those things to discuss. But poll.
Poll?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, poll, the, the, just the.
Okay. I do, I'm sorry. Animal control, fuel, vehicle maintenance. The sheriff's department owns the vehicle, right? Not animal control.
Commissioners on all.
He had it under shared. I marked it out with animal control because I have to by the time. So that's the reason that Sheriff doesn't want to ask you. If you look at your.
Your request.
Yeah.
You're going to go through all these stuff. So we discussed if they don't, they don't.
I'm going to do, oh wait, did you request all of them?
No, just one, I mean, somebody else to discuss one.
So we're, so that's an animal.
The three EMS.
I moved to a poll, I moved to approve the, the consent agenda, my EMS and MS.
Second.
I thought the treasure was in that.
Oh, excuse me, treasure.
So we have the three EMS, the four treasure, and animal control code from the consent agenda. And that's your motion?
Correct.
And your second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, sit by the same.
Aye.
Aye. O, same sign. For the record, Q, I will stay in his and Brown here's absent. Everyone else is in the pen. He's on his way to his next graduation in Tennessee. Okay. Do you want me to give you a third one?
He asked me to do the rest of them. On that, through the consent agenda, except for transfers.
Right.
Doesn't like to do that.
All right. So that brings us to EMS. Would that, would you like to come up and address your three transfers from EMS?
Just come back here and sit with me so I can look at yours.
All right, well, first of all, sorry to have to bring this up to you in the middle of the budget cycle, because I know you guys don't like to do that. But as an email I sent to you guys, my assistant director has moved on. So I took a position in Cass County full time. So that leaves me with an open assistant director position. I called Scott and I said, Scott, listen, I got something to run by you. So I wanted to talk to him about, what I wanted to do is look at, look at that position and see, do we really need that position? Or is this a position that I can separate, give more responsibilities to our supervisors, and then do away with the assistant director position? So if you look at that first page that I, I gave you, I kind of looked at benefits to the county if we do that, it's saving to the full-time employee. It's going to eliminate a layer of administration. And I think we can maintain the functionality of our department by, by doing such. Some of the supervisor added roles.
Is this, is this page anywhere? On the supervisor page?
Is that?
Yes.
Top, very top. So the supervisor added roles, I just kind of listed out what, what the supervisors will be doing, the added roles that they'll be doing. I've already talked to the three supervisors. They are all willing to take on extra responsibility, obviously. I have it in the transfer to pay them or to do that as well. So kind of what I was asking for today is to transfer this money for, to pay the supervisors extra so we can eliminate that assistant director position.
Is there any savings then, or?
Yeah, if you look on the second page, and at the very, the very top line, and I just took, I just took like the whole year in general.
Yeah.
What it would say. So our assistant director made sixty thousand, seven and three this year with the proposed allocated funds. And this would be, so if you look down below that, it says supervisor increase, so it's ten thousand, nine, fourteen, nine. That's for the entire year. A new overtime line of thirty-eight, six hundred. And what that's going to do is, that's going to help me cover call-ups, vacations that we can't get, first time people to do, that type of stuff. I'm going to have to pay them, since they're hourly, I would have to pay them overtime. So I'll cover.
Because you got one less person to cover shifts.
Yeah.
Right.
On the front page, it says assistant director job will be twenty-five, six, thirty.
That's what's left this year.
That's what's left.
That's what's left in the budget this year, yep. So that, that front page is kind of, kind of what I'm asking for today for the rest of the year, to make it work out. And then the second page, that was what the county savings are due for, if it was the entire.
So you're asking to change the salaries right now?
Yeah. Due to the added responsibility, if we do away with the position.
Doug, do these added responsibilities mean that we're going to have to adjust the job descriptions for the supervisors?
I looked at that and I showed Beth yesterday, it has in there a line that says, any additional responsibilities that we give them. And it also pops, pops about them helping with training and doing that already. So it's kind of already in there when we had that, when we made that supervisor position. I mean, if that's something somebody else needs to look over to make sure I'm good at that.
When we looked at it, there was some of the training and manager.
I think it mentions it, right?
Kind of right. Now the general umbrella cover all.
Right, it specifically said help with training and help with.
It was all kind of listed out in there, their training, because they did that, they helped with day-to-day operations.
Day-to-day operations.
They helped with scheduling.
My opinion is, I, I'm, I'm not for doing this midstream. This is, I mean, to me, it needs to be looked at, it needs to be budgeted. I mean, I'm not saying that I'm not for it for next year's budget, but I don't think we should be changing wages again last stream after the last we had last year, changing it stream.
And the only, and the only reason I do it now is because if, if I don't, if I don't do it, I'm going to probably have to hire somebody to help me the rest of the year within, you know, that position being on. So I didn't want to hire somebody and then change it.
Even with your supervisor positions, with them in their job description, are you saying what, what needs to be done?
Yeah, but it does add quite a bit of responsibility. I mean, like, I'm going to have to show, I'm going to have to show them how to do claims, payroll, all that extra stuff now because it's going to happen to me. I've got no way down.
And I'm just going to compare this to what we had happen in the highway department. She did a lot of work, extra work, for quite a few months without the pay, and that was one of the big losses that we had last year.
You know, the difference I see here is the thought of the restructuring.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against, I'm not against it. I'm just not against it midstream.
I mean, I guess, I guess that's, so is this your long-term plan? This is just how you're going to operate forever now?
I mean, assistant, assistant lab.
Yeah, I have, I have that position.
Yeah. And I guess how do you come on employees wage? I mean, that's.
Why would we need to decide that right now?
Cause he's wanting.
That's what he's wanting to do.
So we don't. Here's us standing on what director.
Yeah, as well as an hourly, if an hourly employee.
He's just shifting expense.
Right.
No, he's changing people's wages.
He's, yes.
But they're, they're doing the.
Yeah, he's shifting the responsibility and reducing the, the, of his.
That is the difference in this, what he is reducing costs.
Right. So based on that, I think for it, we're going to save money.
So my, my question is, like, we're estimating here on overtime.
Yeah. And so is there an appetite that because these are supervisors, they're employed now, we can shift them to.
I think that there was one question when we, when we split our assistant director job, when he was on the truck from twenty-fourth all the time. We, we changed that because, and I don't remember, I think it was Cecily, Cecily was here checking with.
Yeah.
And if half of your, in EMS, if half of your job is on an ambulance, you can't get a salary. So you have to.
Half of your hours?
Yeah. That's what I was told at that. Okay, so that's why I was thinking, that's a sticky wick.
Cause I mean, just thinking about, it's practically, right? I mean, they're, they're still working twenty-fourths, right?
Supervisor twenty-fourth.
Right. But instead of whatever they would be doing on call, they're probably spending some of that time. Right. Which, so they're in the building, but what are they doing while they're in the building is the question, right?
I would think trying to track that.
So I mean, so how, I mean, how comfortable are you that this overtime factor is going to be?
Well, if I look back, I don't, I haven't, I'm not a big man. You can ask all the employee. I'm not, I don't pay all the work on them unless I absolutely have to. So that's something I'm just going to have to try to keep an eye on. I don't want that to get out of control either. So there's going to be days that I'm going to pick up in the truck. But if I pick up at twenty-four, then I'm out of the office, you know, maybe two days after. So that's, that's the goal. That's an estimate, that's a high estimate probably. And I don't want to, I don't want to use all of that.
Yeah.
And that's not the goal. This is, they have that much people.
The work of medical assistants is stressful. Takes time every day to take care of your husband.
If I can't cover it, then I have to have somebody do it, whether it's another medic or supervisor, somebody had to cover that shit.
So it shouldn't be this high?
Eight minutes long, where it's.
Just curious your thoughts. I mean, you've been there probably longer than anybody. I mean, I have too, but you've got a lot of experience.
Just hit that thing.
It's.
Yeah. I'm going to defer right now.
Your shift supervisors are eighteen fifty-five an hour. What is the hourly rate?
Nineteen seventy-five.
Nineteen seventy-five.
So that puts their salary right, right at sixty thousand.
We're going from eighteen fifty-five to nineteen seventy. I guess I thought it would be more than that.
Doug, I like the thoughtfulness of this proposal. If we, if we don't do anything today, where does that stick you? Like, there's just a lot of moving pieces here, and I think a lot of people just need to digest. If we don't do anything today, and we, we look at this for next month, what does that do to you operationally?
Well, it's, I mean, I, the supervisors have been helping me so far. So I, I see them continue to help me. They're not going to just not do it that way. So putting it off a month is just going to be okay.
Like I said, I'm generally in favor. I just think that people have to digest this because it's a fundamental change to operations. And I think it just needs to breathe for a minute.
Well, I forget, how do you, how do you? How do you structure your supervisors? They're not based on shift, are they based on location?
You mean, as far as?
You have three supervisors, right? How did you determine that three was the number that you needed?
Basically, because that puts a supervisor on every day except one day a week.
Okay, where are they located though?
At four.
Okay. All of them?
Yes. So they're there so they can help me, you know, if I need something or whatever, they're right there to do it. And they're all the computers and all my special. Cause I've already showed, like, I've already started showing one of them how to do payroll. I sat down and did it, and I showed her how to do it, just to kind of get that. Somebody's going to have to learn one way to do it.
I agree with Josh. I mean, I, I'm in, I'm in favor of this eventually, but right now, I would like to do some numbers and.
Yeah, and I, I will reiterate both great scan options. You know, I think you've done a fantastic job. I mean, if this is going to be a long-term solution to your current situation, I think, you know, overall savings year in, year out, eleven to twelve thousand dollars potentially. This is certainly one of those services that, that we want to maintain for the citizens of the county, the best liability. And if you look at this, as Josh said, by moving pieces, as you and I meant, I think it works exceptionally well. Let us digest, and I do, I concur, I do dislike trying to do, you know, salary variance changes in the middle of the screen.
Well, I think I hope you, maybe that you.
Yeah, yeah, I like this is a, a separate animal, if I will, so.
Do we need to like table this to the next meeting then?
That was my next question, like, your other, you have a building maintenance request for a thousand?
Yeah.
That's unrelated.
That's unrelated.
So, but your assistant to paramedic supervisors, that's, that's the wage increase, and then the overtime line is the other, is, is basically a wage increase.
The only thing is from now until we decide something, I'm going to have to pay.
So you have no overtime?
The only time, the only thing I have is in their regular line. I don't.
Okay, we got that back and over that.
Yeah, so I can take it out of that and then.
So I moved to table the claim to paramedic supervisors and a claim to overtime to our June meeting.
Can I, can I ask a question quickly? So last year at budget time, we agreed to fund an additional full-time employee.
Yes.
Okay, so that went into effect January twenty twenty-two. Is that person hired, working, functional? Okay, so you've got an additional full-time over and above what you had last year, and you're still struggling to cover?
Yes.
Shift and?
Well, and I, and I'll tell you, we had.
Work.
Decreased part-time. Yeah, we do increase the part-time now too.
By how much? I don't recall that.
I think it was almost dollar for dollar, but I can't.
It was quite a deal.
Yeah. It was, it was pretty significant. I don't remember, but I know that it was a good chunk of time over. That was my recollection. And I can tell you to, to, as of today, we've had, and this, we've, this has been a little bit unfortunate here because one of our, one of our employees lost his wife, and now he just lost his father. So he's on extended time off. But we've had thirty-three shifts from the first of the year. We've had to cover extra for time off.
How many part-timers do you have, paramedics?
Uh, ten.
And how many EMTs?
It's ten to twelve, they're kind of what.
Is there any concern that, like, to Josh's point earlier, is there any concern that if we better fund these supervisors and you give them more administrative responsibility, that, that that's going to pull them off of the truck even more, and you're going to have more of a problem covering runs and?
I don't, I don't think, they're not going to be able to come off the truck. So they're going to be working two twenty-powers on the job, and then doing the other duty while they're there on, on shift. And they're going to have to share, they're going to have to share responsibility. So one person's going to, basically what it is, like, one person will be in, one of the supervisors will be in charge of all the scheduling. But when he's not there, the other two, whoever's there, if there's scheduling issues, they're going to have to deal with it while they're on shift.
So it'll be a lot of cross-training.
Yes.
I'm not completely familiar with your day-to-day operations, but is there, is there time that the person that you designate there taking position, if the truck's not running or waiting for a telephone ring, I, I agree that they should be paid for more responsibility, but is there time there when they're not actually on the truck and on the go that they could be doing this work?
I mean, yeah, there's, there's downtime. There is downtime. And there's, there's, some days we're really busy.
I'm not against.
And other than.
I'm for paying for additional responsibility, but it seems to me that they've got, they've got some downtime that they could use.
Yeah, but the, part of the problem is, is if their supervisors are people at Florida, I'm making them do a lot more work. The other two stations, those, those people who are getting the pay the same are, are not doing any of that work. See what I'm saying? That makes sense to me. So like, our supervisors right now are all Florida. So they, they get piled on to do a lot of extra stuff, with this included in there. And our other, the other medics are not doing one thing because they're at different stations. It's hard to send work over to the other stations, if that's what you're asking. I'm not sure that's what you're asking.
Not really.
Okay.
Because if the other two aren't doing it, why are we going to pay them more money? Well, the other two were not. It's only the.
What you're paying?
Are all three of them at Florida?
Yes.
All three of them are.
Yes, all three of them.
Feel the responsibility to hold a pound. I'll second it. Okay.
So on our next.
Wait, I have a, just a point where I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, they're seconded.
And that's, he's seconding my motion?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
Yeah. Okay. Josh, if you would, please, repeat your.
My motion is just to table the, the transfer to paramedic supervisor and the transfer to overtime table to the June regular.
Is there any further discussion?
So at our next month's meeting, who's the department rep, or what are, what are we gonna discuss? Who's gonna have the information for next month's meeting?
That's good.
I think it would be him, if I wanted each of us to do the research.
Yeah, I would, I would just make a decision.
Who lives in rep?
Who's, are you with the department rep? Who's the department rep?
I. Let's have a go.
I would think the department rep will do that. Labor work and send it to us to review.
All those in favor, the motion on the floor, say five, I say nine.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, motion carries.
And if any of you have any questions, feel free to. Move through the transfer for the new name.
Second.
For you, Matt.
Building maintenance, motion. All those in favor, I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor, say five, I say nine.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, motion carries.
People to get off the EMS, I like to say this is the EMS appreciation, is that right? So, we all appreciate that. Don't forget the bag in there.
Both EMS and police appreciation, right? So.
The other one is the officers.
Police officer. Police officer. Police officer. Okay, that will bring us now to treasurer.
She had a doctor come in today, so she'll be on here.
And it looks as though the treasurer, the one that's in front of you, she's looking for a money counter. Evidently, they're receiving quite a few bills in, for tax payments, et cetera. And she would like to have a money counter to expedite counting those bills. In looking at her transfers, I would make the assumption that the three items, computer and equipment maintenance, for one thousand seven hundred and two fifty. I don't know the cost of the money counter, but it appears that it's about two thousand dollars. I don't know that for certain.
The estimate?
Yeah, I move to table that, since she's not here to respond.
Second.
That, that would be all three of those, two.
The estimate was twenty-four ninety-five, I believe this is what it's.
Two thousand.
You don't have that on.
I don't, no.
There we have a motion and a second to table the three items, from clinical assistant, postage, printing and paper, to computer equipment and maintenance. Any further discussion?
One, why don't you have a question?
I don't understand the business logic of it, so I don't.
She's not.
You're just wanting to know why she wants to be.
Yeah, I mean, she has a letter here, but I, my, my core question is, like, is this a labor-saving investment, and what's there aligned on there?
The equipment is to count money, but you're wanting to know if it's a way to save time.
Right, so like, if we make this investment, does that mean she needs less labor to count money?
Okay.
That's my core question, yeah.
And I think we need to look at the other departments, not that, or, you know, is she gonna, you know, counter, cash counter?
I just wanted to know why we were taking order, thinking about, I don't know who said that, I, you met me? I don't need one?
Yeah, I'm saying, you know, the other smaller offices don't need a counter.
Right.
Well, I'll just add to what you said, not what Sharon said, but I count the same money that goes over there, that she wants to counter for. But we don't have to count that. It's not, but I feel better when we count the money to send it over, there's a process on this, how we had to start doing the receipts. You know, we have to count the money, and we broke the receipt, we just gave it to him, then we had to change it for first state law accounts that the people that bring in the money need to take their money over to the treasurer, and then she counts it and approves all receipt. But when we're trying to write a receipt, we need, we need to know that the report of collections is correct. Otherwise, it's just a hassle, so that's why we count them out. But you could use their counter to recount yourself. Well, we would count it before she would get the money, so. I am not asking for a counter. I just was teasing that.
Yeah, motion on the floor, it is to table, and we can hear. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say five, I say nine.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries.
So those are three, or two to be tabled, right?
Three, yeah.
Yes.
I move to approve the printing and mailing ads of two sixty-eight fifty-one.
We have a motion and a second to approve the printing paper of two sixty-eight fifty-one. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say five, I say nine.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, six zero. Which brings us down to animal control.
I was the one that raised the question, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I do. Sheriff's Department's got a bigger budget than animal control, I just thought, probably Sheriff's vehicles gotta win. It's all coming out of the same fire, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm kinda questioning why we put almost three thousand dollars into a vehicle that probably not worth five hundred dollars. I mean, that vehicle's got a, oh, so why did we fix that? I mean, does anyone, I mean, that's my department, I didn't, I didn't know anything about it.
I don't know. Go back to Doc's question, we cannot, one department cannot pay another department's bill, so the sheriffs would not be able to do that.
So I guess that question's for you, I mean, that vehicle's probably not worth twenty bucks. Why did we fix that vehicle?
Yeah, nineteen ninety-six Chevrolet truck, beautiful.
They'll run it.
It's a Chevy.
Simple response, I'll, for Tracy, is that that is our only animal control vehicle. And in essence, the transmission went out, so the price you see there actually is a reduced rate, we were, some of our estimates we had received were closer to four thousand on repair of that. But I had to keep an animal control vehicle on the road, so that's why I'd like it to happen this. That's, that's our animal control vehicle. Eventually, I'm hoping, once we have newer vehicles, we'll fleet late this summer to be able to take some of our older sheriff's deputy vehicles and transition those into an animal control vehicle, but again, I know that that was, you should see the look on my face when I got that, that estimate along, so. But I wanted, wanted to, I'm just gonna keep that vehicle on the road.
Motion to approve that. Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, buddy. Can I thank, two seconds? Doc?
Tracy.
Oh, Tracy. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve animal control from professional services for fuel and vehicle maintenance. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to bring one point up, this, this has already been completed, I don't know how much money was in the line. My computer's not working, so. My assumption is, is that the phone's probably in the red. So, I mean, just in general, like, if, if that was the case, I just wanted to reiterate that how much we need to.
Most recent information I have, Josh, I have a budget stash from the beginning of May. The professional services line at three thousand zero one.
Oh, I was talking about the other line.
Oh, the fuel, yeah, that balance was five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Right.
As of the beginning of May.
I mean, there's not a really good answer to this, I mean, like, if we didn't, if you didn't do this repairs, then we don't have an animal control function department, but just in general, we shouldn't be spending, we shouldn't be spending money then transferring money into cover bills that are already paid. I mean, technically, that account was in red for some period of time, or is red, was. Anyway, just, just a general point we need to continue to talk about as a department.
I wanted to ask, would you have fixed it if it was four thousand some dollars, just to keep it mobile?
One estimate we received was at four thousand dollars for a transmission rebuild.
But my question was, would you have, if it was four thousand dollars, you wouldn't have put four thousand dollars in that vehicle, would you? Just to keep it mobile? I know the animal control is in a disarray right now, I mean, I know there's a lot of things that are being, trying to be worked for it, and I think it's gonna be a big budget thing for us to go over animal control, because they're, you're in a lot of works on building, I've heard, storage shed, and so, I mean, Josh, this is one that's gotta be.
Well, all, all line items, if you don't have the money, you're supposed to wait and transfer your money before you spend.
Before you fix it, correct.
I think is really what he's trying to say.
And that's what I said, I didn't, I didn't, they're my department, I didn't know anything about it, so, or I would have said, no, we can't, mustn't do that.
Does that mean voice is not being paid?
Oh, it hasn't been paid?
Has not, has not been paid, that's why I'm coming before this group, before I submit that invoice.
Okay, your documents, Ben.
Because the job was completed.
The job is completed, I have invoice in hand, but it's not been submitted for a claim yet.
Right. But if the work's done, we have to pay it, that's the same thing.
I mean, I think we have to trust our department head, some group, he, he made a call, and, and, you know, if that, we're not even.
I see, this isn't the greatest example of that, my fault, right? I mean, like, if this was a desk, this is a different discussion than keeping the department going, right? I'm just saying, in general, we should be aware whenever a count is, somebody's spending money they don't have in a line.
And doesn't mean we're not going to do it, is.
Right, I'm just.
We should have been aware of it, right?
Well, Toby, what, what's your thoughts on that, in case you kind of shook your head a little bit? I, I can't just see, what's he supposed to do, he's got a person to work with, and she goes out and drives that truck and picks up dogs. I mean, what is he supposed to do, call his rep and make sure she approves of it? Is that what we're asking?
No.
No, okay, help me in.
I mean, I don't think it's about that, it's just that, I mean, I, I just can't see putting three thousand dollars in a vehicle at all, just to keep it mobile.
So then he is supposed to call you and get your blessing, maybe, is it?
No, because I can't give a blessing.
She's one of seven people, it's not hers to bless.
Well, then, then, was he supposed to, I mean, what was he literally?
He raves it to the council.
To, before he pitches it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna die without an animal control vehicle every week.
What is the function of animal control right now, where are we taking animals?
We, we're still working on arrangement or agreement with Delphi Animal Hospital. Eric has been working with groups that adopt on some of these animals that we receive. But we are, Tracy's right in what she mentioned a little bit ago, that we're, we're kind of in a limbo situation right now as far as a place to take animals, because we have learned quickly that Delphi Animal Hospital is the only location that will accept animals in the county, so.
Previously, they did.